Thank you very much. We had a good recess. We had a little box lunch. It's been a long morning and we are proceeding to move forward in this meeting. It's about 1:25 and we have scheduled a work session today. And we have guests from out of town that represent a company that's dealing with the radio system. And we will turn it over now for Mr. Smith to introduce the staff and introduce those here that are visiting and wish to present their program to us today. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Appreciate the opportunity and the time today.
Just real quickly, Ms. Chairman, over the last couple of years as we've introduced a new communication system, a digital system, we, the staff, has been taking a very close look at the issues surrounding FCC as far as narrowbanding, the requirements between now and 2018 that most of the board and folks from the past are aware of, that you have requirements that you have to meet. That, obviously with moving to a digital system, the changes in, you know, having issues in frequencies and interferences, you know, we've had some issues with that. So we've tried to really take a look at all of those things. The other thing is to look at indoor coverage. As part of our original contracts, that we had an outdoor coverage system, we wanted to look at upgrading our system to include indoor coverage to most common structures in Wayne County. There are probably some exceptions to that. So with that, we had actually brought someone in to take a look at this and some of these issues, plus a couple of smaller points to look at. So I asked Joe Gurley, would he come up and introduce our guest today? He was going to talk to you about the P-25 communication system upgrade and kind of what that entails and look forward to the presentation.
Good afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon.
It's my pleasure to be with you today and introduce our guest with us. We've had several topics of discussion of radios over the past 18, 20 months. And January 13th of this year, we began some discussions with Bob Hammond, R&amp;L Consulting, about some of these topics. And then in March of this year, we began discussions with Radio Communications Company, Mr. Ken Brody who's with us today, CEO of RCC, and Systems Engineer, Mr. Ray Giffen. Then in June of this year, we entered a contract with RCC. We asked them to audit our radio system and at the same time, again, a maintenance program and to maintain our system. And we asked for, get a better understanding of our radio issues, to give us a report and recommend a solution. And we're at that point today. And I'm asking Mr. Ken Brody to come up and give us a report and the findings.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for inviting us to present to you today. Some background, Wayne County, as Joe mentioned, contracted R&amp;L in January to provide independent consulting. Wayne County contracted Radio Communications Company in June to audit and maintain the county system. Wayne County asked Radio Communications Company to research the county radio issues and recommend engineered solutions. Together, we have come to an agreement that one option is the best solution to reduce or eliminate the issues. The agenda is pretty brief, review the project objectives, review the solution, and review the benefits of the solution. What is affecting your radio system? Poor coverage in the east and west portions of the county. There is just not enough RF signal in the areas east and west of Goldsboro. Uncontrollable overlap issues. There are areas of unusable RF signal due to uncontrolled overlap of signals from one, I'm sorry, from more than one tower site. As part of our process, we paid an expert in simulcast systems to review our work. The lead engineer, Joe Blaska, made the following statement. Given the limitation of using the existing sites, the coverage requirements, and I've made that in purple to provide emphasis that the coverage requirements are now in building, and the P-25 non-LSM, we'll talk about that, overlap limitations, I don't think it is possible to make the existing sites work in a fully simulcast system. While I can control the overlaps to some degree, the result is reduced coverage in some areas which would not be acceptable to the users. It means that without the use of linear simulcast modulation technology and without more tower sites, there is no way to increase RF. In fact, he would have to decrease it to overcome the overlap issues. So the project objectives were pretty easy to define. We need to improve the coverage east and west of Goldsboro. We need to improve in-building coverage countywide. We need to improve the overlap effects called time delay interference, TDI. We need to improve portable coverage issues. Update the system and reutilize existing equipment while investing in current technology. Okay, so the recommended solution, as we've led to, is to develop two new sites, east and west of Goldsboro. Each site will have basically what your sites have now, which are new buildings, microwave links, generators. On the west side, we expect to use an existing tower site with US Cellular. And on the east side only, we will build a new self-supporting tower. The upgrades, if you can bring them all on for me, please? Thank you. We will be installing Master Five base stations at all seven sites with LSM technology. The Master Five base stations have linear simulcast modulation technology. This relatively new technology allows our designs to be far more flexible. This results in less overall time delay interference. It allows us to redesign the existing antenna heights and patterns and direct more of the signal into the coverage areas. Linear simulcast modulation is not available in the Master Threes and Master Fives were not available in VHF when you purchased your last system. We will also be installing a new up-to-date network switching center. The two microwave links, which I've already mentioned, and we will be upgrading the capacity of your existing microwave links, the redesign of the antenna system, as well as touching all your portable mobiles, upgrading their firmware and software to be able to handle the LSM. Okay. The map on the left is called Talk Back. This map predicts portable in-building talk back. This means from the portable to a base station. The white areas are predicted to measure or receive signal of better than or equal to minus 92 dBm, 95% of the tile or grid tested, 95% of the time. The light gray areas are predicted to measure or receive signal of between minus 92 and minus 102 dBm. The dark gray is predicted to measure from minus 102 and worse. A tuned radio should receive properly up to around minus 118. So our predictive models are showing that most of the county will have in-building portable coverage. In-building is defined as light construction or stick-built and above ground. RCC will guarantee the white areas. Our guarantee will be based on industry-standard testing methodology. Using the industry-standard 9595 testing method, our coverage study predicts that 62.3% of the county falls into the white or minus 92 dBm or better signal area. And 98% of the county in the light gray or minus 92 to minus 102 dBm. The map on the right is Talk Out. This map predicts portable in-building talk out. This is from the base station to the portable. It's even more solid. Thank you. Next one. List of the benefits. Where the control, the overlap areas will now be minimal. We will have excellent building penetration east, west, and within Goldsboro. In-building coverage will greatly improve countywide. Additional RF will help with the portable coverage issue. The next one, upgrade hardware to current release. The entire infrastructure will be current factory revision. You are currently four revisions behind. The software subscription, the county can delay this expense another year. Allows deployment with minimal system disruption. This is very important. We will be able to build out this solution and have it tested and ready before having users cut over to it. It creates a secondary system for expansion overflow and redundant backup system. The county will have additional channels available for non-public safety users to operate. System is Phase Two ready. The FCC mandate calls for Phase Two ready by 2018. The Master Five delivers this readiness. The county's infrastructure will be ready. Fewer points of failure. Creates mobile rapid deployment system. RCC will build out one of the county's existing mobile trailers that has a self-erecting tower to be used for a mobile communication system for disasters. And no additional frequencies will be required for the solution. Thank you very much. Oh, one more slide, sorry. The summary, meets all objectives, minimal interruption to radio users, provides upgrades to all the products and platforms, and creates some valuable additional features for the county. Now, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brody, for Mr. Smith.
Joe, anybody know anything at this point? Smart, what do you want to do? Questions? Just hang right here, just stay right here. Let's see if you have any questions at this point about the solutions they've come up with, because as Ken or Mr. Brody stated, you know, and as I alluded to earlier, you know, the one thing that we looked at, you know, with digital, and I can't tell you how many times, in fact, I think Joe and I one time got in trouble talking about digital stuff one time, but anyway, that's all right. It's new, you know, there's different things, but some of it is this penetration into buildings. And we had, you know, part of the board, your ask of the staff was to look at solutions for indoor coverage, but also at the same time, look at coverage around the county to make sure everything was as it should be. And that's what Ken and his folks were brought on for, to take a look at that. You know, so really, when you look at improving them, there is some coverage now, but that is really just residual. It was an outdoor system. And it's a building off of, you know, the original system, the backbone that we put in place. So now, you know, they're having to deal with these issues like time delay interference, and we knew some of that was being experienced. You know, trying to, as Ken said, reutilize some of the equipment and work towards the 2018 narrowbanding date. That's a big issue for us. And we've known that since day one. That's part of what you have to grow into. Technology, if I get IT in here, technology and out with radio systems. I've had, I don't know how many conversations with Mr. Frank Flowers, who's been very gracious over the last couple of years working with us, to look at the life of a system, the life of a radio. And when you look at when we started to 2018, you know, there has to be transition to some new equipment, and this is part of that, is to try and upgrade. And we believe as a staff that these solutions that they've come up with, particularly for the indoor coverage, are reasonable, using the backbone that we have, upgrading some of the portable and mobile firmware software that the staff has been discussing with us a couple of years. Sometimes I didn't quite understand it, but now I think we know more about it than we ever wanted to. But also, I thought it was pretty interesting about the network switchings for the centers in Goldsboro. So, and of course, the two biggest additions is to make sure we have plenty of coverage as we move forward with narrowbanding in the east and the west of Goldsboro. And obviously, when you narrowband to 6.25, see, I knew there was six, I just couldn't remember. When you do that, some of these things are going to be required. And that's what we've asked them to do in these solutions. And that's what we're bringing to you today on this portable. So really, we'd like to take any questions or discussion, Ms. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I need to ask where counsel is, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Chair.
I wanted to, I'll recognize you in just a second, Mr. Don. The reason I asked for Mr. Parker to make sure he was here is that it was implied in the local paper that we had an illegal meeting Friday. And there were a lot of discussions in reference to why we went into that meeting. And you mentioned earlier that, Mr. Gurley, that you gave a time of January and March and then in June, and then the contract was entered in with RCC in June. So to keep in accordance with the Sunshine Law and to make sure that we did everything appropriately, we addressed the legal part of why we severed that relationship with CII. And just to make sure that the press understands is that there were questions that we were not allowed to ask in that meeting, because that's not the purpose for the meeting. So I'm sure there are a lot of questions today for the staff and for Mr. Smith and for those who have come with RCC. I certainly have about two pages full. But we will proceed on with questioning and getting, making sure that we understand. And the reason why I wanted Mr. Parker here is that if we start to slide off to CI in a contract, then I want to make sure that we are not overstepping our bounds in discussing CI. But that is an issue, because that's why we're here today, is because either the system was broken, it needs to be updated, it needs to be fixed. There's a lot of questions that we're going to ask today that we did not ask in closed session, because that's not why we were there. So with that said, Mr. Dodder, and then Mr. Mayo, and then Mr. Akon.
I'm going to try to limit my discussions too much in regards to what's happened in the past. But I do want to state that a lot of people in our county are concerned that some four years after our communication system went into effect, that we have, are faced with today about 33% more to invest in this system. So I just want to express that and be on the record on that. One of the primary themes that I need to ask, and that is, I represent the eastern section of Wayne County that's been heavily affected by the lack of communication. And I think you've explained that, if I'm understanding time delay interference, so am I understanding this to say that a lot of these problems have come about as a result of interference from one station to another? Could you elaborate?
Yes, in a way, it has to do with timing. However, in your area, there is also a lack of RF signal in order to achieve in-building coverage.
Lack of RF signal?
Yes.
And to resolve that issue is the reason you are recommending that we erect a tower?
And to use the LSM technology that allows us to redeploy, redesign, redirect the antenna system.
LSM technology?
Yes, linear simulcast modulation. If you want an in-depth answer, I'll have to call on my engineer.
But this is your technology?
This is Harris' technology. It's, actually, it's a P-25 technology. Motorola has it as well.
But your recommendation for improvements and enhancements to this system would resolve these issues?
They would provide the coverage that we've demonstrated in the maps today, the predictive coverage.
And if I'm understanding, also that map that's up there now, you and your company are guaranteeing the 9595 inside coverage in the whited area?
Yes, again, based on a building structure that I've described and based on industry-standard testing methodology, correct?
And I am understanding that you stated above ground, so anything below ground would not be guaranteed, and the structure would have to be stick-built, so a massive stone building as such would not necessarily be guaranteed.
Right. It's very typical that, you know, structures like jails and hospitals may require their own in-building bidirectional amplifier-type system. Having said that, though, also, I have pointed out that the light gray area, according to the models, predicts you will have in-building coverage in the type of building I've described.
Additionally, if I'm understanding, this investment of a little over $3 million also brings our system up to date in regards to the software that has not been implemented over the last few years.
That is correct. When we were brought in, first thing we had to do was audit your system. We had to figure out exactly what you had. We had to relay that to the factory Harris, and then we had to provide maintenance, which we're doing. And you are basically four revisions behind right now. It's very important to keep those revisions up from a factory support standpoint. It will solve some minor issues you're currently having, and it will certainly allow us to get the kind of support we need from the factory.
The four revisions you spoke of, if we implemented those in prior years, what would be the cost of that approximately? Four or 500,000?
Those are figures I've heard, yes.
Four to 500,000. So really, the 3 million, four or 500,000 would actually be upgrades that we should have already implemented. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Mr. May.
Yes, I don't want to get back into the original contract, but yet, part of the reason, part of the reason could be that we're here today is because of what's taken place in the past. I do want to ask a question of Mr. Gurley or Academy Manager or somebody. On the original contract, which I understand was signed in 2008, is that correct?
No, that, if I recall right, and I don't have it with me, but it was in 2010.
I'm talking about with the radio systems, 2010.
2010.
Okay. Now, my question is, is that why would we go from 2010? I understand that the initial contract did not include inside, it just included outside. Is that correct? Because that's what I understand, the original contract.
Let me clear the first question. Sad to tell you, I can't remember, my mind's not clear on the contract of old. It may have been September 2009, because we cut over in April 2011, so there was a year and a half of buildings. So I think it was maybe September 2009.
And we signed sometime after that, and it was passed?
So the original contract did not include inside communication, is that correct?
The original contract did not...
For 10 million, I understand. Is that what was...
Well, it's kind of a complex question to answer. You know, 10 million is always the magical number used. Of that 10 million is a $9.7 million loan that we got for the system. And then we pulled some 911 funds that was allowable back during that time. I don't know what the exact number were, a million dollars or so. Of that 10 million, we still have 907,000 left, I think, of the 9.7 million loan. Of that 10 million, 3, 3.5 million was for the mobiles and portables for the end users we supplied. The remaining part of that, roughly 6, 6.5, 7 million, whatever the dollars would come out to be, was for building the infrastructure. It was for the towers we built. It was for the generators and buildings. It was for the microwaves. It was for the Harris equipment. So it was kind of a complex answer to your question.
We bought radios and equipment separately. We actually did that. Even though we had one large contract, we actually purchased that through Harris.
And that was purchased through state contract? Everything we could buy on state contract was. There's only a couple of things that was not state contract, like the tower system, I mean, the antenna system.
Yeah, I understand. Well, I want to get to the root of my question, okay? Let's cut to the chase. Since 2009, whenever the original contract was launched, did anybody know at that time? My question is, why are we going since 2009 not having inside communications? Did we make a mistake when we didn't include it in the first contract? Have we been operating as a county since 2009 with no inside communications? Yes or no? That's what I want to know. I want to know why it wasn't included in the all-inclusive number of the original contract. Because if what has been recommended here, about a half a million of that is upgrades, Mr. Don, is that correct? You said a half a million is upgrade. So that means there's 2.5 million somewhere that should have been appropriated somewhere along the line for inside communications. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Was the original system, when we bought it, capable of inside communication?
Yes.
Well, I've been told that the original contract did not include inside communication. This came from Mr. Smith.
That is true.
It says outdoor coverage. However, when you look at, when they did the, Joe, and I'll get the terminology, when they did the propagation studies originally, and you looked at coverage on the portables and particularly on the mobiles, you knew you were going to get some indoor coverage. Most systems, when they, as we had found years ago, they said outdoor coverage. Now, you then have a system, they usually would either upgrade, it depends. If you were very rural, stick-built, wasn't a problem. But when you get into more urban-type settings, so when you get into the urban areas, you had to put in BDAs.
Yes.
BDAs. You had to do things to get the signal in the buildings, you know, hospitals, jails that were stated earlier. So the outdoor should have given you at least some basic coverage inside. That was our understanding. Now, but, understand, the contract said outdoor coverage. We knew we would get some, but we knew there were limitations, like the hospital. In fact, we had conversations about the jail with BDAs and things like that.
But to try to answer some more of your question, 9595 outdoor coverage is implied in the contract, but what you've taken on that, there will be inside coverage in certain areas, and there will be inside coverage in certain areas that will be a failure. That's just nature of the RF communications. But to back up on your 400 to 500,000 upgrades question, which you're asking, those 400 to 500,000 upgrades is part of what they call, and I won't speak very generically and vaguely on this, if you want more details, I'll have to call mail up, but it's the FX package. And every year, we have budgeted for that FX package. I think it's anywhere from 85, 95,000, whatever the number is in there. We budget every year. We never spent that FX software because the system was never accepted from the company that originally designed and built the system. So those 400, 500,000 we have not spent is some of the three, four, and five upgrades that Mr. Brody was talking about originally. Those upgrades that we did not get would not have given us inside coverage.
That's my question. Okay, you answered my question.
Yes.
So on the original system, on the original contract, we knew from the get-go that we would not have 9595 coverage inside, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. But yet, we decided to do that based on what? In other words, if we knew, or the speculation was 60% coverage rather than the 95, who made the decision not to go ahead and add a... decision not to go ahead and add enough to the, to, to the cost, do whatever necessary to get 95-95 inside and out?
Mr. May, I mean, it's a good question, but the one thing, and I'll go back, and the staff, the one thing they worked really diligently on were procedures. And, I mean, I know enough about, about fire to be dangerous. However, one thing I clearly understood from the very beginning, and I cannot tell you how many meetings we had with groups of police chiefs, fire chiefs, different people, looking at our procedures on scene and in buildings, because that radio, you cannot, in a fire situation, cannot go into that building. There has to be other life safety procedures to protect you in a building. Here, that being the case. Now, granted, you know, looking at, now, we're looking at how do you upgrade to get better indoor coverage, but even with indoor coverage, you still can't count on it. You can't hear. Plus, the other procedures, and I can't, I mean, Wayne, you've got some firemen in here who can tell you that. So, they got into VTAC, and that's what people, it's an industry standard. So, what I'm saying is, there was an answer. There was a solution. So, we felt comfortable with that, based on that, on those procedures at the time. Yeah, so I...
But yeah, here we are, though. We're, we're putting approximately two and a half million of this three, three million into a system that gives us supposedly 95-95 coverage inside. So, if we had the potential before to do it, why are we having to spend two and a half million now in order to get it to work? That's my question. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, okay? I'm just asking, I'm just asking some, some questions that I have been asked, okay? That's all.
You have very good questions, and I appreciate your asking, so we can clear it up for somebody that might not know. This dates back to 2004, when the original study was conducted. And through the time, we took a very methodical approach to this, and there was a committee formed that, that looked at the recommendations of the study and followed it all the way through. And the committee, if I recall right, was a representative of the Sheriff's Department, the City of Goldsboro, Town of Mount Olive, Wayne County Fire Association, and, of course, our office was to, to nuclearize, just because of the, the fact of what we do and our mission. So, that committee was formed, it researched, it looked, it listened, and it made a recommendation to the board commissioners at that time. So, that's how that materialized up to this point. At the point of, of recommendation in that year of 2008, and it started in 2009, and it was completed and turned over in 2011, 95-95 outdoor industry standard was what was accepted by the committee, recommended to the board commissioners, and adopted by the board commissioners at that time. That clears it up.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Akon.
Yes, I just, I'm just trying to deal with the staff.
All the hours that they put in in getting where we're at today. As we all know, we've been plagued with this almost from the beginning. And it's time for us to move forward. Now, I really don't have the answer. We need to, we're at the point that we need to move forward on this. I'm not an expert on radios. If anyone has any more questions, you know, feel free to ask Mr. Brody, or Joe, or Mr. Smith. But we just, we need to move forward on this.
Mr. Bate.
I agree with Mr. Akon, that I want to move forward on this, because I know that we're, in my opinion, endangering lives out there, but still, we're looking at $3 million. So, I want to be absolutely sure this is going to work, and we're not back here in a few more years, or on the next boards, doing the same thing we're doing. Can you talk a little bit in detail about how the, the antenna system is going to be redesigned, and why it will work, and why it's not working now? Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I think everybody needs to know how, how it works.
Well, likely, I'm dangerous. I can, I'll give you the answer as, as deep as I know, and if you'd like it even further, I'll, if I'm allowed to, I could call up the system engineer. What we basically found when we audited the system, to a large degree, was that many of the antennas are currently beaming outside of the county. We really don't know why. We assume there's probably good engineering reason for it. It wasn't an area that we delved into. Our mission was to get an understanding of what the county considered to be their radio issues, and find a solution for them. The use of Master Fives with its technology that I've described, and the flexibility that it provides our system designer allows him to raise the antennas. It allows him to use different patterns, like omnidirectional. And the result of that is, a lot of the signal that you're currently not getting in the areas that you'd like to have it, it will be there in our, in our design. And also, when you add two new sites, like our proposal is doing, it's also providing a tremendous amount of additional RF signal. So, that combination basically gets you, if not close to, well into a county-wide in-building system. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And I follow.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bate.
You know, they're still got the handheld radios and that kind of thing, and I understand when they get those concrete buildings, that kind of thing, that you can do a talk around. I think that's why it's gone. Then we'd have to switch to another station. Is that correct? Is that how it works?
I think that, I don't know if, so...
Is that how that operates? So, there is a way to get it around?
Yeah, normally, there's a standard operating procedure for your firemen to operate inside of buildings, and it would be direct communications rather than through the system.
One other question. What would be the life expectancy of this system before we're looking at any more infrastructure needs?
Boy, I hope I'm retired by then.
Well, that's a good thing.
Um...
Of course, if I got $3 million, I'm retired by then.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I wish that was, that's simple. Well, the, the first part of the answer is the assumption that we, after, one year after this is accepted, after a year following that, that you will be budgeted to stay on this firmware-software subscription service with the factory, and that a company such as ours, or any others that you choose that's capable, is upgrading on a timely basis. That said, there's really no reason that your infrastructure, if maintained properly, can't last another 10 to 20 years. It just really depends.
And one final question. You did say that whereas in the white, it is definitely guaranteed by, okay.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And those in the, that are in the gray area are, are not guaranteed, but you still say you're going to get the light, but it's still 95-95.
Yeah, so there's two shades of gray. The light gray, we expect, or this model expects to see a signal anywhere from minus 92 dBm to 102 dBm. And again, a reminder that a, a radio should, its receiver should open at minus 118. So, that is plenty of signal. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bate. I've written down a few questions, and if I don't start asking them, I'm, I'm afraid I might forget one or not write one down. The Harris system, are they the system designer?
Of what we're presenting today?
Are you the system designer?
Of what we're presenting today?
For this, for this system that you're presenting today, is Harris the designer?
No, Radio Communications is, is the designer.
Is who?
My company is, is the designer.
Okay. And this was designed by you, so your system, and I asked this the other day in closed session, because it involved CII, is that I asked the question, is any of your organization using CII at this time to put anything together on this, on this model that you're presenting today?
No.
And with that said, I also asked a question that I'll ask today because it involves CII, is that are we, is it, is it your advice or your suggestion with this system, that you're taking CII system that we paid $10 million for? We just used $10 million, for example, because that's what's, my constituents is in their heads, $10 million. Are we taking that system and putting it on a shelf? Are we taking it and doing something with it to use your system? Can you help me understand the, the hardware cost of what we've already bought, and how we're going to use that compared to how we're going to use your system?
We're going to be reutilizing all your existing buildings. We're going to be reutilizing all your existing microwave systems. The Master 3s that are in place will also stay in the system. They will talk to the new switch that we'll be putting in. So, basically, and if there's a couple of channels of Master 3s left over, we're going to put those onto the mobile rapid deployment platform that I talked about. So, bottom line, everything that's there, we'll have a, a use moving forward.
Do you have a license to service CI's equipment? Is there...
No, I don't know what that means, to clarify.
Well, are you, as far as warranties, or how do we move forward?
I'm under the impression, I believe from your counsel, that this is your equipment.
Okay, and that's the equipment we purchased, okay, from CI. Is that correct, Mr. Park?
Which is Harris.
Which was Harris?
Yes, Harris equipment, and he's servicing the Harris equipment.
Well, we're, we're servicing Wayne County's equipment.
Yeah, that was made by Harris. That's why you were asking.
All right, okay. Which is, which was bought with this system in '09, the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would this purchase, a, a contract, will a contract be required other than what we've already signed with you? We signed a contract back in, as indicated by Mr. Gurley, back in June, a contract. So, this contract with you that we signed was to recommend a solution, so this is your solution. So, with that, I guess this purchase will, will require a contract. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, there would be, if, if you choose the solutions that have been developed, it would require, you know, the attorney to work with, you know, RCC to put a contract together.
Okay.
You know, you would have to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Did we, did we have a contract with CI?
We did.
Okay. Was there a performance bond with CI?
No.
There was not. Is there a performance bond with your company, with this purchase?
I'm prepared to, yes, I'm prepared to enter into one, yes.
So, with that performance bond, so the people that are watching, constituents today, can you explain what a performance bond is, please?
I don't know.
In reference to your 95-95 in and out, inside and out.
A performance bond is a, a legal instrument that binds a company to a guarantee that it provides a, a third party.
And your guarantee, these project objectives, was to give us 95 in and 95 out. That's your objective, is that you explain that you would be giving us in reference to that map?
Mr. Chairman, I, I thought I explained fairly thoroughly as I went through it, what we would be guaranteeing. I'd be happy to repeat it if you'd like me to.
No, my concern is light, stick-built. And we have a hospital, we have a nursery hospital that's not lightly stick-built. We have a jail, we have police stations downtown Goldsboro. We have several areas that have large buildings. And my, my concern is a performance bond that you will do what you say you will do. So, we will not be in the same situation as we are with CI. We do not have a performance bond, as indicated by Mr. Smith, with CI. So, therefore, we're where we are today because we don't have one. I was just asking, will you give us one?
Yes.
Okay. Lord will, and this will never happen, but if an officer or a fireman loses life or seriously injured, which is attributed to the radio system, before we have a settlement with CI, because the non-performance bond was not filed, is Wayne County going to stand alone with no recourse? Mr. Park?
I think that county would have liability under those circumstances.
We would not be liable, because we entered into a contract with a non-performance bond.
That is, that is my opinion.
Okay. Okay, being over $250,000, does the state law require us to use a bid process for the $3 million that was just presented?
Not for this kind of thing that you're doing on this.
Why?
Because you've got specific things that you need, and it's not something you could bid out and get the same kind of responses to, to do exactly what you're asking for as an exception to the, to the bidding rules.
We used to call the old, the radio guys, we used to call the jail a long time ago the Motorola rule, and that, you know, because it was proprietary, and when you had Motorola, that's what you dealt with, that's what, you know, so when you bid it, you know, everybody had Motorola specs. Well, guess what you got back? They were all the same. But, in this case, we have Harris equipment, and in order to deal with the Harris equipment and add to Harris equipment, you had to look at a Harris D. Look, that's kind of my take, but...
We're also, Mr. Chairman, we're also providing you state-contract-like pricing, so we're simulating...
Which is already been bid.
Right.
If anyone wishes to ask questions, certainly, I mean, I've got several more here. Mr. Dale?
I have to be careful as to how we state stuff, because the $10 million thing got out there, because sort of, we sort of put it out there, and people saw the use of this, and the radio system costs $10 million. They didn't think about all the stuff that we had to buy to enhance the program, or they didn't think about the generators, the towers, all that kind of stuff. They just called it radio system. And, and, you know, we talk about the 95-95 thing. You know, any radio can fail going inside of a building. You might say it's 95-95, but it may not work in certain areas, depending on, you know, who you are, and, and, you know, it, it just don't work that way. But I think, based on what I heard from the gentleman, that this is going to be a good program. It's going to, I worked this with radios for more than 20 years, doing my, uh, standing in criminal justice field, and I've had some good radios. I've been in areas that it wouldn't work. And so, you know, we just don't want to have the emergency people out there thinking that every time they switch a radio on, it's going to work perfectly. Every time they switch it on, it may not happen that way. So, I just want to make those comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kamari.
Yes, Paul. Just for my satisfaction, and I hope folk who are listening, who are not radio experts, like I'm not, I think they just want to know, number one, if the, the folk who are using the equipment has a problem with it, what's your approximate response time to help those folk get it straight? And that's, that's all I've always been concerned about. What's, you know, what's, what's your response time to help them get something back online? Because like Mr. Dale said, everything is not going to work every day. And one thing that frustrates folk who are trying to use equipment is, they call back to the folk who put it together, and they don't, you know, they don't, they don't know who's going to answer, when they're going to answer, and that kind of thing. So, just to, just to give people some, some level of comfort.
That's a good question, and it also allows me to clarify that when, when we were contracted in June, at least in my opinion, the primary purpose was to provide you with system service. We are located in Cary. We have people on call every night. We have a emergency number to call. We guarantee no later than a one-hour callback and onsite in, in four hours. So, that said, it's been my experience, especially only being an hour and change away from here... So that said, it's been my experience, especially only being an hour and change away from here, that if there is a significant problem, we don't just sit around and look at our watch and say, okay, it's three hours, we better get going. We go as quickly as we can.
And that's the reason I asked that kind of a question. Probably, I want to, that 95-95, I keep forgetting exactly what you all mean by that. But I can tell you this, 95% of the people that I know want to know if they're going to get some help. And so they're depending on Mr. Gurley and his crew to make sure they can communicate and be on the way. And so if Mr. Gurley can't talk to you all, I want to know if somebody's going to be talking to him to get it straightened out. And that's where I think 95, the 95%, the 95 I'm thinking about is that 95% of people, 12 o'clock at night, want to know if it's working or not. What can you do to help?
If I may add to that, we are able, in your system, to remote into it immediately too. And there are occasions where we can even resolve it remotely right away. Or that also allows us to gain valuable information so that when we do show up, we know a little better about what it is that we're confronting.
And one final question, Mr. Gurley. It's just the time that you've been working with them up to this point. And I know this makes me sound like a loaded question, but have you been about 95% satisfied? Then you get this one.
Never, never say 100% by 99.9% satisfied, you know. One day, he might have told me he liked Carolina better than Duke or something similar. I wasn't satisfied that day. But however, I would like to also remind you during the budget process this year, when we're making our presentation to you, part in there is our training expense and our Lynchburg trips. And that's where Mayo and staff and Brian, we're all trying to get acclimated to the system so we can be the very first line defense for you. Now, we're not an hour away, we're 15 minutes away, we're 10 minutes away. We can remote in. So we're trying to employ all regional responses and local responses as possible for the end users.
So I conclude with this, I conclude with this. Mr. Gurley, all I want, the hope is that the moment you find out that you know that some miniscule part of it is not working, you let that, y'all get that straight so that our board won't be in a position of saying, well, what happened when? That's my concern.
Rest assured, rest assured.
Thank you, Mr. Kamari.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dodery?
If I could follow up on a few questions there. As I'm getting my head around this, if we do nothing, if we do nothing, we can continue to expect the level of communication that we currently have. Am I correct in that statement?
Unless you know something I don't know, yes, that is correct. If you do nothing, we would strongly encourage you immediately to get onto the Harris FX program, which is the hardware software, or it's the software subscription that allows us to get some things as up to date as they possibly can. Some of your hardware cannot be brought to current as it is right now. So there would be some additional cost if that was the case. And if you do nothing, yes, the coverage that you currently have will be the coverage that you will have.
That being said, leads me probably to my next statement. I think we owe some folks an apology. And the apology that I'm speaking of is for the last few years, I kept hearing the comment, "User error." And what I mean by that is, and to interpret that, that those end users didn't know how to use the system. And it seemed as if the blame was sometimes put where it shouldn't have been. Because if I'm hearing you correctly, and what I'm understanding, it needs, it has to have these upgrades if our county is going to have a viable communication system to reach all areas of our county. And with that said, I just think that it's a shame that over the years that it seemed like the blame wasn't laid with antennas pointing outside the county. And yet, the end user seemed to be blamed a good bit. And I, for one, want to apologize to them for any blame or that they may have been placed on them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes, one other, one other question. If we do nothing, we do nothing, and we put in the FX, whatever, software, whatever, insider coverage, what kind of percentage are we looking at? And the other question is, is that what have we been getting since you've been here on insider coverage? What's the percentage?
We, I don't know what the percentage is. And whatever it is, is what you will continue to have, so.
So we don't know, we don't know what percentage of insider coverage we're getting?
Well, part of our mission was not for any company to come in fresh on day one and come back to you with an answer as to exactly what your coverage is currently. We would have to do an extensive, very expensive testing. We'd be happy to do that for you, but there would be a cost. All of the, all of the work we've done to this point has been at our expense. So your in-building coverage right now is what it is.
Mr. Gurley or Mr. Smith, is anybody in there?
I cannot answer either. We've never been asked that question. It's always been 95-94 applicable. So we do not have an answer for 95-95 indoor. The only thing we can tell you is based on the reports we've received from the terminal users, and that's it.
Well, if the contract says outside only, and somebody assumes somewhere along the way that we're going to get some inside coverage, I'd like to know, as Commissioner, what have we been getting with existing systems?
I think as Mr. Brody stated, we can get that information for you if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like to know that.
Okay, I'm not going to put you on a timetable, but we just have to get back with you on some dates and times for that. And Mr. Dodery, I agree with you. Certain amount of apologies there to some end users as well, if it was always operator error. But one thing we do want to clear up, though, there were certain standards set initially about when and how to use the portable radio. Not underneath the coat, not on the back of the belt in the cruisers of the law enforcement car. So some things were established early on. That did reflect some poor coverage, you know. But, but I agree with you, Mr. Dodery. But that, the main intent with the operator error was the way it was designed and how the standard was asked to be complied with. But I agree with you.
I appreciate the comment.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. May.
If, it's like, if some of the coverage issues that we're experiencing up to now, could it have been caused or could it have contributed by us not going with the 800 frequencies way back in, what, '08? For the 800 frequencies, I understand when they were available. I understand they're not available now. That they were more clearer, more definite. Would it have any effect on the system as it's working now if we had not gone with the 800 frequency?
I'm going to steer off a little bit, Mr. Chairman, if you allow me. And ask Mayo to come up here. Mayo's a little more versed with 800 megahertz than I am, of course. And I can go back and tell you some stories on 800. And it's going to be opinionated, whichever and whoever talks how. But we felt like, and the community felt like, at the time, that we made the best approach, staying with VHF. There's interference horror stories even on 800 now. There are no 800. The VIP system's completely full. People are getting busy queues. So that's a failure. And what we're hearing, that's our opinion. But I'm going to ask Mayo to tell you more specifically in details of the 800 system.
If that's what Mr. Mayo wants to hear.
Okay.
If you want to know something about an insider 800. Yeah, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm wanting to do is to make sure that the citizens, that the citizens understand that what we're looking at here on this $3.2 million is actually justified based on good, sound judgment. That's all I'm asking.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
No, it's good afternoon, isn't it? On the 800, we did look at the 800 megahertz system when we were in 2004, 2005. And the first thing that caught our eye was when you're looking at the wavelength of 800 versus VHF, 800 is a lot shorter. And we noticed we're going to have to have a lot more tower systems up. What we found out, and if I remember correctly, the cost for us to do a 800 megahertz system here in the county was about 14 million. So it was a lot more expensive to go that route for 800 megahertz at the time. When we were looking, when we did three different radio systems. And 800 was the most expensive, at about 14 million. Because you had almost doubled how many tower sites you had to have.
Did you look at any other besides what we settled on?
We looked at, we looked at VHF trunking, conventional VHF trunking, digital and 800 megahertz, I believe.
Okay.
And the VHF trunking, what we went with was the more sound. There wasn't a whole lot of cost difference between the conventional and the digital. But digital was what everybody was going to have to go to eventually with the six and a quarter. So that's why we're trying to look at the future on that. But I remembered 800 megahertz was about 14 million to do that, to do that process.
Okay, thank you. A question on the, I'll get, you say contract, just let me, well, I've got this on my mind. The, talking about the 6.2 kilohertz, can you, can you talk to us about 6.2 narrowbanding capability? And how we're, we're not there yet, are we there? Is that what we're going to with your system?
I'm not sure what your specific question is, so.
Okay, I'll, let me just jump up to the top. On December 2009, and pardon me, Mr. Brody, this is my first time as far as asking these kind of questions because we didn't ask these questions in closed session. And we've had a commissioner that's been a part of this for six or seven months because I appointed him to do that, Commissioner Akot. And he knows a whole lot more than I do. So I'm just asking a lot of questions because this is my first opportunity to do that.
No problem.
So pardon me if I come across with some body language, but this is, this is serious business. It's called their lives at stake, and there's a lot of money involved. And it's not my money. So pardon. But in December of '09, the FCC issued a public notice, I'm sure you're very familiar with it, DA 092589, to inform and remind licensee, frequency coordinators, and equipment manufacturers of narrowband migration deadlines. And I'm sure you're familiar with that. One particular key deadline was for equipment manufacturers should be aware that beginning January 1, 2011, the manufacturer importation or certification of any 150-174 megahertz band equipment capable of operating with only one voice path per 25 kilohertz of spectrum will be prohibited. And applications for equipment certifications must specify 6.25 kilohertz capacity or capability. With this notice and certain clarity, would it, you know, be best to get a legal opinion, not from a manufacturer, not from a designer or staff, but from a third party, preferably an FCC attorney? So that's why I was asking about the 6.2 kilohertz capability. And you mentioned that earlier. And I'm just trying to work what I know in that into what we're talking about. So help me on that.
All right, I'll help you as much as I can. And if you would like further, if you would like further clarification, your consultant, maybe Bob, would like to speak.
Sure, absolutely.
So your equipment right now is 12 and a half kilohertz, which is what you just read. And the FCC is mandating. I'm not here to tell you that the FCC will stick to this date or not. Here are all kinds of things, so I don't know how to respond to that. But by 2018, they will be expecting Phase 2 compliance, which moves it down to the six and a quarter kilohertz. And also, by the way, gets you additional channels. Gets you two for one. Bob, would you like adding to that, or?
Help me understand that, please. We don't want to be doing anything illegal.
Basically, you're taking a one-lane road. It's 25 kilohertz wide. And when you go to, when you go to 12.5, you've made a two-lane road. When you go to six and a quarter, you get a four-lane road. What happened is, is that when you went to the two-lane road, you were able to do digital communications. Now, when you go to the six and a quarter, that will give you two paths per, per frequency. So you'll have one base station sitting there with two abilities to talk.
I thought we were using one path, one pipe.
Right now, you're using one pipe, but it's 12 and a half wide. And you're, because we did that because it's for digital communications. If it was analog, if you were back in analog, you couldn't do that.
Are we splitting that, or are we still using the same pipe?
Using, you're using the same pipe. It's 12 and a half wide.
Okay.
That's basically what it is.
Okay.
So you're going to get two for one without having to purchase another base station.
So are we in compliance?
Yes, you are. And you will be in compliance with what you're, what you're purchasing in 2018 if the FCC holds their, holds their ability to do that.
Yeah.
And they may not-
Speculative.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gurley?
Not introduced behind Mr. Hamlin of R&amp;L Consulting. Mr. Hamlin resides Sunset Beach, North Carolina, retired Motorola engineer. And he's come on board us in January 2013. And he's been a delight to work with and gave us some very worthy recommendations that we still look to today. And speaking on all of the narrowbanding splits that we're talking about today, we need to remain a little wiggle room there because the 218 split they're talking about, SEC, is a recommendation as it's written today. Now, if I recall right, the 2013 split we did from 25, 12.5 was originally supposed to occur in 2009. I recall as far back as 1990, talking about these FCC splits in 15 years and stuff. And that's a long ways down the road. And all of a sudden, turn around, there we are with the split here. Part, part of this communication study that began in 2004 and was instrumented by a former county employee in communications that drove this communication study. And these recommendations are just that. They were recommendations from, from that part. And as we began the contractual procedures and started the development implementation program, the system design and build-out was so large that we had to take it and dissect it out to address it and assign it to individual employees to keep from having one person so much massive a duty on them. So I want to get you that. But the 2018 probably is not going to be pushed out like the 2009, 2013 was. But there's that potential there. So I just want you to know today, if we say 2018, if it goes out 2022, that's a possibility. But right now, we've got to plan on what FCC mandates telling us today.
Okay. All right, you help me with that, Mr. Redcock.
Yes, I think, you know, not all of the questions, but most of the questions have been asked today. But we really need to get into the funding. We're looking at roughly $3 million or a little better. I need some guidance from Mr. Smith and Ms. Holt on where we can get the funds from. I know you don't have the figures with you, but.
Well, I mean, you've got a couple of options in reserves. You could, if you look at our capital reserves, you also have a balance of money on communications, $300,000 or $400,000 remaining that could be used. And then, I guess, cable franchise, there's some money. So I mean, between those three, is that appropriate? It would have to look at the balances, but, and I, now, that's why I'm not quoting a number right now.
Right, I understand.
And just thinking out loud, that's why I asked Ms. Holt to take a look at it. But if I look at those three areas, you could come, you could come pretty close to covering the three million with those. It would take those three pieces to do it.
Okay. Okay.
But that, we could look at that.
And, you know, and the three million, I was as shocked as anyone when, when the figure came out. But, you know, we've, we've got to fix the radio system. We have the, the funds available. How long, do we need these exact figures in that cable fund, or, I mean, or you?
Do you want me to step out and read you the balance?
Sure.
Sure.
She'll check those.
Okay. If anyone else has any other, other questions, you know, while she's, while she's getting that, we've got just a.
Mr. Page?
Well, I'm not sure it needs to be done till she gets back, but I'll just spread this out. I know what some of these levels are in these areas that you're talking about, and I hate to say this, exhaust every bit of those funds. The earlier presentation we had today at two percent, and it's like, part of our money, there's just not more than that.
On economic develop, no, I think you got, you got some other projects you could get.
Well, I'll just, you know, I'll just.
I've already written out about four things, go, okay, we need to look at this.
I'm just trying to figure out what's.
I'm just trying to get the other counties' money, too.
Just a double to throw out there. If you've got some nuts there, we'd spend it on every project.
I, I, basic, because we have used that money before, I'd say it probably wouldn't cover it.
We got two, Mark.
Oh, yeah, I got four ideas. One of them, I know is definitely, we could choose it.
That was my question. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Those three places you said we could pull from, that will zero those accounts out.
Not in total. You, you would have, um, the communications money, there's some dollars there you use. I'm saying of that total and what's left to be paid on some projects right now, you'd be left three or four, four hundred and fifty, I'm guessing, four hundred and fifty thousand. Cable franchise, I think, I think you may, you'll, you'll come close, but it's either the cable franchise, I think it's capital reserve, you won't exhaust it, because there's, there's a larger amount of dollars there. I think on cable franchise, we obligated two million the other day?
She's coming back with the figures, so we don't speculate. We get some factual figures.
But the woman will not be exhausted.
Well, Commissioner. Wait a second, Mr. Comartie.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner Bell's the one that brought it up. He, he makes suggestions that we, he's been wanting us to, to get some money from eastern region. And if, you know, two, two percent interest, if we can, and we can do that, and rather than to plead some of the backup accounts that, that we need from time to time, maybe now's the time to look at that.
If it wouldn't qualify, it would not qualify. I've used it before, it wouldn't qualify, it's not economic development. But we have other projects that may. I've already talked to Sylvia and Nesbit. That is a fair one. I mean, there's some other uses.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not, we're not going to leave it.
Mr. Comartie, and then Mr. Dottery?
And I know I'm, I mean, I know I'll tell management to do this, but from a public assumption, I, I know that I've heard bits and pieces of where the dollars have been coming from, and I've been related to the radio system already. This is a public assumption, if we're good, and the public knows, at least, some of these dollars we're talking about, just going to prepare this, may have already been related to the system in some way. But, you know, we keep, my phone, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We're, we're talking about, uh, uh, ten million dollars and a level of three million dollars, but, you know, when you look at the whole picture, a lot of the infrastructures are already in place, and it's been in place, it's not being thrown away. And some of the dollars that you're talking about are just naturally related to the system the way that I hear it, Mr. Chairman. So, a public assumption, once the budget is, once the figures are topped, I just explain to the public, you know, in real detail, where the dollars are coming from, and how they are sort of in the pipeline already. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Comartie. Mr. Dottery?
Mr. Gerlach?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that we've properly introduced Mr. Hamlin here in regards to his role in this, and I think the public is generally needs to recognize that we have gotten outside independent advice and consulting. So if you'd kind of give us a little more information in regards to Mr. Hamlin's role in this and his, his counsel.
I'm trying to get all these dates in my head. If it.
You can blame me.
It was fall of two thousand and twelve. Our staff had got to Wits End, and we started calling some of our counterparts and peers in other counties throughout the state. And Mr. Hamlin's name appeared more than one time. We contacted Mr. Hamlin by phone, I think in December of two thousand twelve, had conversations by phone. He'd got a lot of good reviews from, not only in the communications, emergency services world, but from the county commissioner side of the world, too. So in January of two thousand thirteen, our staff met with Mr. Hamlin, fed him information that we had, and we wanted an independent consultant, as you said, to give us an unbiased opinion and not no radio-specific or equipment manufacturer-specific opinion. And he did such, and he gave us enough information that we felt comfortable, and it was time to start discussions with another contractor to provide us service, and asked another contractor to come in and audit our system.
Well, I, I say that because this has been a long process. Shortly, we were going to have completed one year. But you and have reached out and, and worked to find solutions to our issues, we call them issues, reached out to Mr. Hamlin, found someone to consult that wasn't a part of, of actually building systems. He made recommendations, and it's just taken time. I learned one thing in government, does not move rapidly. But with all of that said, I, I think the, the public out here needs to recognize, over the last twelve months, you all have been working hard trying to find solutions to issues.
And thank you for bringing that up. And even in advance of that, we had paging problems with the current system that was in place initially. And we reached out in January of two thousand and twelve and began the process of fixing that. And at the same time, we were having very risky interference problems with current channels that we had in the system. And we reached out and got what we call part twenty-two frequencies, which does not have interference. So, yes, in the past year, very busy with Mr. Hamlin and RCC. Prior to that, a year before that, we reached out to get part twenty-two frequency that was clear for the radio system. And we now, and I can say very proudly, that our staff worked extremely hard on getting a paging system that I think is at ninety-nine percent.
Okay. And lastly, if I can make a comment on this, it seems like over the last thirty days that we've spent or about to spend a great deal of money, but I can think of nothing more important to, to invest in than our volunteer firemen, our emergency personnel, and communication within this county.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dottery.
I agree with you, Mr. Dottery, and thank you for expressing that. It's, it's always been at, at the bottom of, of our thought process, the root is to protect the, the users, the law enforcement, our sheriff's deputies, our EMS personnel, volunteer firefighters. I was a volunteer firefighter for twenty-six years. I'm there with them. I feel their pain. We want to get it fixed. Nobody wants to get it fixed any worse than, than I do or our staff. But not only that, too, we want to make sure that people understand that what we're fighting for and trying to get resolved is for all the citizens of Wayne County and all the transient customers that come through here. I mean, not only are, are we want to protect our firefighters and EMS and law enforcement with the portables, but if we can't get them to the needy people, then we failed again. So we want to, all of that for the hundred twenty thousand plus people that are our citizens and the transient people that come through here.
I think that's why we ask a lot of questions, Mr. Gerlach, is we don't want it to fail again. We're, we're working, we're working on a system right now that's about two and a half years old, and we've got, you know, estimated eight or ten million dollars invested. But more especially, we've got firefighters out there who have come and knocked on my door since you flipped the switch, before these commissioners were up here, with the exception of Mr. Bell. And I'm with you, there's no one that wants this to work any more than I do.
And they knocked on my door also.
And I know they've knocked on yours, and you've knocked on mine, and I've knocked on yours. But the, the citizens, especially the firefighters, right now, must have guarantee. That's, that's all it is to, it, you know, we, we work hard, I think that's been laid out. And I know the people, I know the people of this county know that you work hard. And they know we work hard. But the firefighters must have a guarantee. That's plain and simple, because they're paranoid. They've been out there, they've been in these buildings, and they haven't been able to communicate. They just haven't been able to communicate. And that's what they've been telling. And that's why I'm sitting in this chair today and hammering on this thing since the very first day you threw a switch. Whether it's CI's problem, whether we owe them money or not, I don't, that's, that's not the issue right now. The issue is getting it fixed. Now, this ninety-five, ninety-five, I want to be assured by our county attorney that he's seen the contract, that there's a, that there's a performance bond, that we're going to get ninety-five, ninety-five. Because our firefighters, right now, are looking at us being streamed live on the internet, watching us right now, wanting to find out if we're going to protect them. That's what it's all about. And you're saying, you're saying, your company is saying today, just like we had a company that come before us, back, not before us, this was done in September of oh eight, before I was sitting down in this seat. But a company came here and said they were going to give ninety-five, ninety-five, and two years later, we find out what's going on, and it ain't pretty. Plain and simple. But today, we're depending on you to give us ninety-five, ninety-five. Whether it's stick-built or not, if a man goes inside and needs to call somebody, he don't want to follow a fire hose out. He, he wants to be able to talk to somebody. That's plain and simple. And that's what we're looking for. The money, the funding, we can get the funding, but you can't replace life. So right now, I want guarantees. The firefighters want guarantees. That's plain and simple. Ninety-five, ninety-five. Now, if you can't get it, do you have a cure clause in your contract? I don't know. The attorneys will have to look at that. But if, if something happens in six months, then we, you know, if you get up and running and it ain't working, then I want some guarantees, I want some assurance, because that's what the people have elected me to do. And that's what we're doing today. Yeah, we got to move on. Everybody in this room knows we got to move on. But we want certainty. We want certainty.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with your guarantees, and I agree with performance bond, and the contract will be written, and there'll be parameters that will spell out and define what ninety-five, ninety-five coverages are.
Have you seen the contract? Mr., Mr. Parker?
No, sir, it doesn't.
You haven't seen the contract?
Far as I know, it's not been prepared. Y'all haven't said that you're going to.
I know that, but we, you know, again, I mean, we'd like to know that you're on board and look at the contract before we do anything, that's for sure.
I will certainly see it before I get it to you to sign.
Well, the, the county manager has to sign it first before I get it, because he's, he's running the ship. And we've just got to make sure that, you know, what they're saying is, is they can do what they said he can do. That, that's all it is, is that there, there are parameters that you have to work with, and, and we're looking for you as the attorney to look at the contract, to get it put together, and to make the firefighters in this county assured that, that we have done our due diligence.
Well, now, certainly, before a contract is presented for signature, I will have reviewed it and made sure that it does everything that you have said and everything that the board has said. But I understood, Mr. Brody, that so, that guarantee on interior was ninety-five, ninety-five in stick-built houses, not in everything that you would have to use in those that were not stick-built.
BDAs.
BDAs. And, uh, so, that's a little different from what you just said, and I wanted to make sure.
Well, I'm just going on what this, what the firemen are wanting to, that's what I'm hearing from the firemen, and we have a Fireman's Association tonight, meeting, and, you know, I want to be able to stand before them and say, as a commissioner, that you've got ninety-five, ninety-five in and out. Now, that's what we've been told today, and, and that's, is, is, you know, I hate to cloud the issue, but that's, that's why we're here.
But as, as I stated earlier, the contract's going to read ninety-five, ninety-five with parameters. It's going to define what the process is of testing and, and the methodology with it and the industry standard. But I, I don't think that Mr. Brody nor any other company would guarantee ninety-five, ninety-five in all structures. I just don't think it's possible.
The, the structures, Mr. Gerlach, are lightly stick-built, is what was defined by Mr. Brody. We have got multiple buildings in this county that are not lightly stick-built. They're bricks and mortar. And, and that concerns me, especially in the city of Goldsboro, where we have these large buildings. We have firefighters that go into these buildings that are bricks and mortar, three stories, five stories, ten stories. And I just need to make sure that they're safe when they need to speak to somebody outside.
And I understand what you're saying.
How many millions of dollars do we have to pay?
I, I understand what you're saying, and, and, of course, we can continue to, to beef up the system every how you would like to, to make sure those guarantees are there. But there are some safety nets there, too. You know, we can refer back to NFPA standards and other standards that we talk about, that safety net of the VTAC channel. You know, it's common practice is to go back to that analog, and that's, that's nationwide. These problems that you're talking about today are consistent throughout the United States and throughout the world. So, you know, do we, do we stop at ninety-five, ninety-five for stick-built or continue on and make it more robust and spend more money? Or do we come up with a satisfactory, reasonable approach here that's accepted by everyone with understanding of proper use of the equipment? And in the event that you get to that place that's not, or you skeptical it's going to work, then go to the VTAC method of operations, you know? So, that's a decision you guys are going to have to tell us or give us some direction today, which way you want to approach it.
Mr. Raycott?
Yes. I, the clarification on the ninety-five, ninety-five indoor coverage, uh, there's no manufacturer, whether it's Harris, Motorola, Johnson, it doesn't make any difference. They're not going to guarantee you ninety-five, ninety-five inside of a jail, inside of a bank. There's just limitations on what anybody can do in. But this, with the, with the system that we've got, uh, the VTAC channel is what we're going to rely on, on in some of the buildings. I mean, it's just virtually impossible to get a hundred percent coverage in, on every building in Wayne County. It's just, it's not going to happen regardless of what system you go to or what the manufacturer is. And I think Ms. Holt's back in the room now, so she may have some figures for us and.
The money lady.
This would be my suggestions as Finance Director for financing this project. For cable funds, I would use two million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. For county capital reserve, I would use three hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And contingency in the, um, radio funds that are left in the original radio project, I would use four hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, for a total of three million, sixty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars.
And that, that's all cash? You're not borrowing anything?
This is not, no, we're not.
This is paying for, this is paying cash straight out for the system?
Yes.
All right. Does that liquidate the, um, the, does that liquidate the cable fees account?
There will be no, no unappropriated cable funds at that, with this, with what I'm suggesting.
And the three twenty-six is from?
The capital reserve fund, and that does not liquidate that fund.
How much is left in that fund after that?
After that, will be four point three million.
And the four hundred and seventy-two, I'm sorry?
Unappropriated.
And the four hundred and seventy-two thousand?
Um, that is the, the original radio funding. That's what I'm, that's what I'm anticipating right now, that, that we have.
That's the original radio?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a question on the original radio fund. That's Mr. Bitt. Wait a second.
Is that with ten percent discount?
I don't know. I, I got a, I've got a, I've got a question on the, um, the radio fund as it stands. How much do we owe CI right now?
I don't have, Joe, you'll have to answer.
How much, how much is that, that we owe them?
Mr. Chairman, I would.
Because that's in the radio fund, right?
That will be coming out of the loan that's still available.
That will be coming out of the loan that's still available.
But we, there's a balance there to CI?
Yeah, and that's...
And this comes out of that fund?
Comes out of the loan.
Same fund?
It's out of those proceeds, correct?
Well, the loan, we've used all the loan money, we're just paying back the loan now. This is, there was more than just one type of money that was put into it, so this is the balance, and this is the cash that is left in the fund where we originally did the project. And I don't know, I did, I took, I, you know, assumed that a balance, not knowing what the figure was.
So, you're not going to the bank?
But, okay, but, okay, I'm okay with, I understand the first and the second one, but the radio fund? The radio fund is the fund that we're using to pay the balance to CI. If we pay anything to CI of what we owe them, it's gonna come out of this fund. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is correct.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know there.
I accounted for that before, I came up with the balance to use it.
That we were gonna pay CI, or it was gonna come out of that fund that we owe? Wait a second, please, I'll let Ms. Finance Director answer the question, please.
Both. I assumed we would pay CI, and I used some of the money in there, not knowing the figure. I just came up with an amount that I felt like would cover that amount. Joe, this is what I brought there.
Yes.
And I think I've over-anticipated the amount.
Okay, it's just, it's important for me to understand that if there's a balance in the radio fund, which is owed to CI, then does that money move from that fund into this funding arm? And then we have to deal with that CI balance, however we're gonna deal with, because you're coming from a radio fund that is funding CI. Is that, is that correct?
I'm using the same fund. I just, I set up a different account number in there, you know, I have, the way I'm going to do it is I'm gonna set up a radio system upgrade, RCC.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will be transferring some of the money that was in, that is left over from the original project into this to support the total that was just quoted to us by RCC.
And if CI wants their balance, what is the balance?
We're reviewing that now. We don't have an exact figure right now, Joe.
Do you have an estimate?
It's roughly, this is 402, 404,000, that's disputed.
440?
402 or 404, if I recall right. I apologize, not having that number with me handily, but of course, we're gonna be talking about enhancement of the radio system, but...
We're just talking funding now.
Yes, that figure is disputable.
Okay. Let's see, so we got, okay, if there's a balance of about 400,000 in that fund, then if we have to pay CI, then we can look to possibly a $400,000 plus the 472,000.
Okay. To give you the exact figures, the radio fund has $922,354.25. I reserved 450,000, not knowing what the expenditures remaining would be. I used the balance of $472,354.25 to fund the RCC.
You've answered my question. You're working off the 922,000.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Acock, you were...
Yes, sir. We've got, we've got the figures. Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions, and certainly if anyone has any questions, you know, I'd like for you to feel free to, you know, for me to ask more. But if not...
Can we ask more before you make the motion?
Certainly.
Okay. Because there may be amendments, I'm just trying to get all this out before you make a motion. Are there any more questions? Mr. Dodery?
I did have, very briefly. What is the cost of the rental to U.S. Cellular on that tower? Have we discussed that at all?
Currently, we're at, if I recall right, currently, we're at $500 per month on existing towers.
$500 a month?
Yes, sir.
That's rather insignificant, thank you. The other issue is, these are not firm numbers, are they?
In other words, you haven't actually drafted the contract yet, you have not actually gone through and actually gotten the actual bottom line.
That is correct. We've been working as fast as we could to reach this point. We have not addressed a contract, for example.
So, again, we want to make sure, since Mr. Bell is here and has already brought it up, that we, of course, get that 10% bill discount.
Ministerial discount, yes.
These are not firm numbers. Is that correct? These are not firm numbers.
Well, our intention is to present numbers as firm as we can possibly make them.
Which are much less, much lower than this particular one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dodery. If you lower the price, with that, have any bearing on performance bond?
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yes, sir, you're standing there, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was looking at some notes.
Sorry, the question again?
If you do lower the price, will it affect the issuance of performance bond?
The price on the screen assumes a performance bond, so...
What if you lower it, like this Commissioner and the other Commissioner has just mentioned, if what you get is lower than what you see, does it affect the performance bond?
Well, at this point in time, the price on the screen is the price that we're offering. It would include a performance bond.
If it is lower, would it include a performance bond?
I don't know how it would be lower. I don't know what we would take out.
But if it were, would you still, could we still require a performance bond if it was any less?
If hypothetically, we found a way to lower it, and you still wanted a performance bond, then hypothetically, it would also have a performance bond.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Pate?
So, that is a firm price?
It is, it is a firm price, yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Stop moving around.
Listen, let's make sure we uncover everything we can uncover here, but that does not include the steel tower in the western side. That's assuming that we can have a rental on existing towers. So, it could, it could go up, I think we guesstimate a 180-foot tower, 60,000 or so, so...
Same with the property.
Yeah. And the east side, too, so...
Okay. So, we're looking at that as not including towers possibly, or the acquisition of properties to put the tower on, if we have to have?
It does, if I recall right, it's Brody to make sure I'm right, it does include a full site at the east side. It includes a full site on the west side to include generator and building, but not the actual steel tower. The steel tower on the west side, our intention and hope is to be able to co-locate with a existing tower.
So, that is, that is correct. I know we all want to think in the simplest terms possible, however, on the east side, our design has provided the county, I believe, a one-mile radius, one and a half mile radius, within which they need to find sufficient property for us to deliver and install a 180-foot self-supporting tower for the antennas for your system. What I mean by that is the tower that we picked is as economical as possible, that would be required to support your load, not others. If you wanted something more sturdy, that could be engineered. On the western side, as we worked this through as a group, we, we looked and we found an acceptable location, the U.S. Cellular Tower. To my knowledge, I don't know if anybody on your, in this committee has, has contacted them or not, the assumption is that we can get on that tower. And so, if we cannot, we would have a bump in the road, so to speak.
Is the rule of thumb generally a million dollars per tower, as you work through engineering and building towers and acquisition of lands? Do y'all have a rule of thumb?
No, I mean, I think as you drive around home tonight and drive by towers, you'll see a wide range of different kinds of towers. So, we have everything from maybe a 1,600-foot one outside of Garner to a little 90-footer. So, they really have a range, and it depends on location, wind zone, and loading.
So, in your study, do you have any estimate of a cost on the west side if you have to make, if you have to acquire property and build a tower? Do you have a cost estimate of what you might need so far in your study?
So, you're saying, then, if the...
The property that we're gonna use?
Well, he's engineered, and if he need one, if there's a, to get what he designed to get, have you come to any estimates of what it would cost to build one on the west side?
Okay, so, if we can't get on the U.S. Cellular, and we need to find another location, and maybe the property, the assumption here is that the property would be provided by the county, and then we would put a tower there for your purposes. May I consult my system engineer for a second?
Sure.
Would that be 180-foot over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you remember roughly the...
About $60,000. So, the county has taken the control, oh, yes, and kind of helped us with working out land portion of the acquisition, that's where the question came from.
So, about $60,000 covers the cost of the metal structure.
Any other questions? Mr. Acock?
Yes. Keep in mind, you know, we're talking about on the western side, the U.S. Cellular tower. And like Mr. Dodery brought up, what's it costing to put it on the U.S. Cellular tower? Keep in mind, also, we have towers that we are renting to U.S. Cellular and other wireless networks also. So, it's not, it's not though, I mean, it is gonna cost us, but they're also paying us for some of our towers. But now, this tower is a freestanding tower, you know, like in the eastern side, if we do have to put one, well, we know we've got to put one up. That would be just for our use. That tower is not, not designed to go start renting space on it. This will be just our tower and for our use only.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acock.
Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if you, if there is no more comments, I'm ready to, I'm prepared to make a, a motion to, we move forward on this.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter to a contract with Radio Communications, quite known as RCC, to enhance and upgrade the county's radio system by adding two towers, installing at least five channels of Master Five base stations at all seven sites, design the antenna system, upgrade the portable mobile firmware and software to include linear simulcast modulations, LSM, and to provide indoor coverage, among other things. This would provide 95-95 coverage outside and inside stick-built buildings in the white areas that is shown on the maps. The contract will be for $361,081. Three million, three, yeah, I just got a discount, Joe. Final written contract will be submitted for approval through the county manager and county attorney. Mr. Chairman, it is anticipated that if the contract is approved now, the work will be completed in six to eight months, so we can ensure the protection of our end-users. And, you know, we look at the six to eight months, and I wish it was one of them things we could go in and flip switches on, but it's not. But that's my motion.
Motion's on the floor. I'd like to reiterate, my discussion part is, I'm not gonna go back and repeat what I said a few minutes ago, that was sort of my follow-up to all of this. But $3,61,081, is that, is that figure? $3,61,081?
$81,081.
Does that include budget amendments that were, as stated by Ms. Holt?
I was, I was getting ready to go into the funding. This motion, I like the motion, and personally, I'm just concerned that we are moving forward without a contract. But if it's a letter of intent or a motion to the company that the Commissioners are voting today to move forward, as Mr. Acock has said, with the $3,61,000, then my concern is that all of the above of what we have talked about, and looking at a contract that does have a performance bond, that does have a cure clause, that if something goes wrong, we're not gonna be left out where we are with CI right now. And that's my, I guess, my part of, I feel like that hopefully the firemen will be protected, and hopefully that they'll understand that we have made the right choice to move today. But the guarantees are still somewhat vague to me, are a little cloudy right now, because I haven't seen a contract. I haven't seen it written out exactly what you're gonna do. And to make a commitment with people's money at $3 million, I, you know, I'm going a little against the tide right now on me, because we, a letter of intent, I'm challenged not to make an amendment to this motion, because I don't have anything written down. Everything you've said has just basically been taped. And it wasn't gonna be taped until I ordered it to be taped five minutes before you guys went on, because there was no intention to tape this today. And there was no intention to put it live on the internet until I made it so, as Chairman. But now we've got proof, it's on tape, we're putting you to the test. And we appreciate all that you do and all you've done to other counties, but this is Wayne County, and we've got some issues with our radio system, and we're paranoid. So, I hope you can understand that. So, we're looking at you as a CEO, is to make it happen for this county, and to do the best you can, and we're putting a lot of faith in your company today. And the people are, and the firemen, most especially, are putting a lot of faith in what they've heard today. That's my part. Mr. Pate?
Councilman, you will make sure, when you read that contract, things that he's talking about, that he spoke about, as long as those things are read in that contract before you read it for signature, through the county manager or through the chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Mr. Acock?
Yes, we, you know, we keep referring to the fire departments, and be honest with you, I'm as concerned or more concerned with law enforcement as I am fire departments. Percentage of them, their lives being at jeopardy on a call is probably greater than the fire department. So, I don't want anybody in law enforcement thinking that we're just concerned about the fire department. We're concerned about every, all the end-users in Wayne County. Law enforcement, EMS, fire, everybody. I just, I just want to make the general public aware of that.
I think they are.
Any others? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Dodery?
Mr. Acock, gosh, I know that was a long motion, but I think there was a condition in there that that contract actually be reviewed by the attorney, county attorney and county manager.
Yes, sir, it is. Okay.
I thought so. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Appreciate you coming today. Thank you for your staff and all that you're doing. Mr. Smith? Does that conclude?
Did it include the budget amendment? I'm sorry, I didn't...
We can, we can, we can make a separate motion, we can. Is there a recommendation from Mr. Smith on what the motion should be, since he's got his thumb on the finance?
Ms. Holt, just to read that back off again, because what she said was...
Recommendation from you, Mr. Smith?
Okay, I will read the budget amendment as I've prepared it. Increase expenditures in the RCC line item and the radio system fund, $3,61,081. Decrease the current radio system line item, $91,482. Decrease contingency in the same fund, $380,871. Increase a transfer to the radio fund from the cable fund, $2,262,548.32. Increase a transfer from the Capital Reserve Fund, $326,179.68. Total, $3,61,081.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dodery?
I move adoption of the budget amendment.
Any discussion? Motion's on the floor that we adopt that amendment, budget amendment. Any discussion? Oh, y'all are quiet. Yes, I've got some questions on that. With the rates as low as they are, and we've had some discussion on... With the rates as low as they are, and we've had some discussion on rates, spending cash is, certainly reduces our strength as far as AAA rating and what we have on hand. I would like to, in discussion, discuss how we can borrow money at one percent or two percent and not utilize this cash. It is, this cash is, is how much on the tax rate? Seven hundred, what is it, seven hundred and sixty, what's a penny on the tax rate?
You can round it out to about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars divided into three, what is that? What's the four and a half?
Four cents.
Four cent? This is four cent on the tax rate. We've got a lot of things that we planned on, and this, and of course, education, we're certainly looking at that, and they've, they've talked about reserving or putting in a four million dollar safe, safe way for them. This is not budgeted. This is, this is, what's that going to do to our, if we use this cash, what's that going to do to our capital improvement plan that we, that we gave the Board of Education two weeks ago? What's that going to do to it?
Like the, we, in fact, we've just got an update on the, and Pam and I had to ask Davenport to, if it was a four and a half or five million dollar reduction of use of cash from the schools fund. So we, you know, we're putting that in place because that, you know, that is several cents, you know, that would add to, to our CIP. We would have to incorporate this there also. I mean, it just, I mean, it has an impact, because it's, it's use of cash.
I will, I will tell you this, there, every fund you're using in this is restricted funds. You have, you're using a capital account that is a radio account, that is a capital fund we set up. Always capital funds are restricted. You're using a capital reserve fund, which is a restricted fund. You're also using cable funds, that is part of your general fund, fund balance that you will soon be hearing about in about four weeks from your auditors. But even though it's part of your general fund fund balance, this is restricted money. So it is not, when we quote to you your unreserved unrestricted fund balance, this is not part of that money. This is part of your restricted money in the general fund fund balance.
Would you recommend, would you recommend, Mr. Smith, that we, that we use this cash on hand, even though it's restricted, or, yes, or rather than go to?
Cash because of the size, and the reason I say that, when you go to the credit rating agencies and you borrow this, and to all of us, this is a lot of money, but to county government and to bond rate, this is a small amount of money. That's why we had really targeted ten million or greater, and we stood that based on policies years ago and talked to Moody's and Standard and Coors. When you borrow smaller amounts of monies in short periods of time, it produces your creditworthiness, because it looks very short-term, and that's how it feels to them, and they usually start knocking you down, and you pay more in interest rates. So in this case, I would suggest paying cash, and I think, in fact, the question came up when Davenport was here, I sat at the table, and I said, you know, if we have to do anything with our communication system afford, I don't know, whatever the number would be, what, they said we use cash.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Motion's on the floor that we accept the recommendation, is that correct, Mr. Dottery? That we just, all right. No other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that's the funding. Thank you so much. Mr. Smith, do you have anything else on your plate that you want to discuss before we, I asked for a motion to go into closed session?
Today is the day of the incident. Just check, make sure now we had our notes.
Wait a second, wait, wait, wait a second, wait a second. Okay, because we're going to go into closed session, if that's what you all want. Okay, do I have a motion that we go into closed session, please?
So movement, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. So motion on the floor, we go into closed session. For what purpose, Mr. Parker?